We're going to go ahead and get started. Call to order, the City Council Successor Agency Finance Power Authority, City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember, Authority Member Johnson, present. Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Mayor, Chair Paris, we have a quorum.
Do you have a motion to excuse?
Motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes.
You excuse the mayor, correct?
No, you.
Well, you did finish the motions, I wasn't sure.
Chair Zetto's not here. We have a quorum, so I'll call the Housing Authority Meeting. Roll call please.
Authority Member Harvey, present. Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Present.
Chair Zetto, we have a quorum.
Motion to excuse Chairman Zetto.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. Invocation Pastor Ryan Parish, the New Hope Community Church, welcome.
God of heaven and earth, we come tonight to acknowledge your presence and to acknowledge your authority over all things. We come tonight Father acknowledging that these leaders bear the burden of responsibility for this great city, and we ask your mercy for them and through them to the city. We ask that your wisdom will be theirs tonight, that they will have justice and clear eyes as they consider everything that's placed before them. And God, as they serve faithfully and as they serve sincerely, we ask your blessing on them, and as you bless them, bless this great city, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing. Mr. Fuller from our Criminal Justice will do the pledge.
Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Any items to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, we'd like to pull item CC5 from the consent calendar to allow staff to do a short presentation at that time.
So we're not pulling it off the agenda, we're just pulling it from the consent-
From the consent calendar, that's correct.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards for the Housing Authority? No. We need a motion and second for the adoption of the Housing Authority. The minutes?
Still moved?
A second.
We have a motion and second, let's vote. Motion passes 3-0-1 with Mr. Smith abstaining. So we need HA-CC1. Do we have a motion and second for adoption of resolution HA-2-13?
Summat.
Second.
Okay, Successor Agency, S-A-N-B-1. Barbara?
Vice Mayor Crist and Agency Directors, you have before you for your consideration the adoption of resolution SA-0913, which is approving the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS as it's commonly called, for the period January 1st through June 30th, 2014. With the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, successor agencies are required to prepare a listing of obligations for the coming six-month period. The ROPS is due to the Department of Finance by October 4th for property tax distributions on January 2nd, 2014, and with your approval, the schedule will be submitted to the Oversight Board for their consideration at the meeting of September 17th to meet the required deadlines. I'm available if you have any questions.
You have any questions?
No.
I need a motion and second.
A motion that we adopt resolution number SA-09-13.
Second.
We have a motion and second, let's vote. Motion passes 4-0 with Mayor Paris gone. Okay, S-A-N-B-2.
Now we have for your consideration an adoption of resolution SA-1013, which would approve the successor agency budget for the period January 1st through June 30th, 2014. The Health and Safety Code requires successor agencies adopt a six-month budget, and the budget is developed from the enforceable obligations list and the ROPS that you just approved, so I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? I need a motion and second.
A motion that we adopt resolution number SA-10-13.
Second.
We have a motion and second, let's vote. Motion passes 4-0 with Mayor Paris absent. The minutes, we have no speaker cards on the minutes, I need a motion and a second for M1.
I'll move that we approve the City Council Successor Agency and Financing Power Authority regular meeting minutes of August 27th.
A second.
Motion passes 3-0 with Mr. Smith abstaining. Consent calendar, we're going to pull CC5. Michael, did you still want to speak on CC5 before they do the presentation or after?
After, please.
Okay. I need a motion and second for the consent calendar.
I motion that we approve a consent calendar with the removal of CC5.
Second.
We have a motion and second, let's vote. Motion passes 4-0.
Vice Mayor, City Council Members, Deputy Mayor, good evening. I'm here to really change the recommendation for staff. When we prepared this report, we weren't aware of some deficiencies in the bid package. And so my staff's recommendation today is that we reject all bids for project number 12-10, and we suggest that we repackage the project and come back to you in the future for this project.
Brother, are we doing this because there's a technicality?
The bids, the low bid was found efficient, the second low bid is quite a bit higher, there's only two bids, and we don't have sufficient funds to go to the second low bid.
So you want us to pull this and redo it or reject CC5?
We want you to-
Reject all bids.
Reject all bids and let us repackage it and we'll go up to bid again.
Okay. Any questions?
Just clarification then from City Attorney, that would end up being a no vote then. Or are we looking at this as now modified?
This is a modified motion, where we're seeking a motion to reject all bids, so we're changing the motion from the one listed in the agenda-
Got it.
-to the motion we're asking that someone make, and that be to reject all bids, as opposed to the original staff recommendation.
Just a point of order, we're not making a modified motion because there is no motion on the table.
Correct, it's the worst-
A motion different than what the recommendation.
Correct, we're asking, we're changing what the recommendation is, so the motion would be, if you concur with the new recommendation of staff, the motion would be to reject all bids.
Got it, I just wanted to make sure that when we voted, the end result was correct, because the way it's written, that would be a no vote.
If we made that motion.
If you made that motion, but that is not yet the motion.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I need that motion.
Yeah, I'll move to reject all bids at this time.
I'll second that.
Okay, wait a minute.
Vice Mayor Crist, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm glad this is being pulled, because the boulevard is getting kind of cluttered. This gives us a chance to do something, to unclutter the boulevard and use it for future use. As you've noticed in the Valley Press this morning, they were talking about some of the movie companies coming up here and doing movies, and I suspect with the reduction in the federal budget, that some of the aircraft manufacturers will eventually have to leave this area, and those hangars can become movie sets. And this city, the boulevard, can be used as a movie set. Right now, it doesn't appear to be a movie set, because it's cluttered with the kiosks, it's cluttered with too many light poles, but giving a little work, we could clear some of that stuff, and it would be an ideal movie set for Main Street America. It's something to think about before we construct a gateway and really ruin it for any possible movie shoots. Also, I didn't see attachment on this, we talked about this before, there was no attachment to this CC5, so I did not know where the other half of the money was coming from. Half of the money is from the federal government, and I guess the other half is, I don't know, the other $700,000, $700,000, I don't know where it comes from. But when this comes back up, and I hope public works will think about it too, let's try to make the boulevard friendly to the movie industry for the future, for our economy. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Let's vote. Lots of questions.
Or statements.
CC5 passes 4-0.
Vice Mayor Crist and Members of the City Council, the item that is before you is a general plan amendment and a zone change that affects approximately 93 acres to the west and to the northwest of the soccer center, and the request is to redesignate the site to non-urban, that would affect a small portion that is adjacent to the soccer center, and to rezone the entire site to RR2.5. The purpose of this would be to allow for the development of a photovoltaic solar facility on this property. The Planning Commission at its August meeting reviewed both the general plan amendment and the zone change, and also approved the conditional use permit that would allow for the development of that PV facility. Can you go to the next slide? This is a layout of how that would look. This particular property is one in which the city is working with three separate developers of solar projects, and would enter into agreements with them for the lease of the property, and they would develop the photovoltaic facilities. We believe that this is an important step in the city's overall efforts to promote alternative energy, to move forward on the city's plan to be a net-zero city, and to make productive use of property that the city has in its ownership and has been laying fallow and vacant. Further, it is property that is within the overflight area of Plant 42, and although the zoning designation would allow for a fairly low-density residential development in lieu of this, this particular project would obviously not place any residences within that overflight area, and we feel that that is an effective use and a proper use of the property. The property immediately to the south of Avenue L within the city of Palmdale is designated as industrial, and we feel that that's also very much in keeping with this overall approach. The Planning Commission, in its consideration, did recommend to you approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change. Should the council approve those, then the conditional use permit that allows the development of the property for a PV solar facility would go into effect once the zoning is effective on the site. I would answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
No.
I think I'm remiss in not opening the public hearing before I get scolded.
You can open it now.
Okay, I just did. Any questions? Ron? We have a speaker card? Michael?
Mayor Crist, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen.
Vice Mayor Crist.
Excuse me. Last time we had a council meeting, we had a presentation about the Palmdale Power Plant, and some of the things that were said about the power plant was that it would affect our city, Lancaster, it would affect the soccer fields. We have a project here, solar energy project, which is going to affect Palmdale, it's going to affect Palmdale, and it's going to affect the soccer fields. And to be consistent, I have opposed every solar energy project the city's brought up, and I oppose the Palmdale Power Plant.
Michael, help me out, how's it going to affect Palmdale?
Well, if you read the description on, it borders on the part of, industrial part of Palmdale, okay?
Okay, the prevailing wind blows this way if we follow-
That reminds me, it's not true that just because it's an industrial area, there will not be residential areas in some of these areas before. For example, over on 60 and K, they rezoned the area from commercial to residential to put housing over there by the prison. So these areas can switch around, these properties may not be residential now, but they might possibly be used in the future. So it's not a done deal, we're doing the same thing right now, we're changing zoning laws. But the idea is, let's don't be hypocritical. We complain about the power plant, it's going to have the fumes come up here and affect our city because of this dislocation, and now we're going to have this monstrosity that's going to affect the soccer fields, we don't know how these silicon panels, or we don't know how this light is going to affect the soccer fields. So I don't, I don't agree with this, I think it's time to stop this solar stuff before it causes our city any more blight. I mean, it's beginning to look like a solar city around here with acres of solar panels. If you want to promote solar energy, why don't you promote it for individual households can buy solar panels? So I do not favor this, and I hope you will not approve it. Thank you.
Brian, would you like to respond to any of that? You could say no.
I guess the only thing I would respond to is the city does encourage the placement of solar panels on private residences, but it is important to understand that the state of California does limit the percentage of power that can come from those. So we really feel that as we push to be a net-zero city, we have to have both the commercial production and the individual behind-the-meter projects.
And has there been the proper mitigation for this project?
Yes, we have gone through the proper process on the environmental, we did give the city of Palmdale an opportunity to comment on the environmental document, they did not have any comments indicating concerns with the placement of this project at their, at their city limit line, and I feel probably in the long term that their land is going to remain industrial, because it is also part of the overflight and buffer area for Plant 42.
What about the dust mitigation?
The approval of the conditional use permit contains conditions that essentially require all of, all three of these solar developers to meet the requirements of the Antelope Ballet Air Quality Management District and meet their definitions of preventing fugitive dust from leaving the site.
And we have a mitigation on it, so if they blade any natural soil, they have to put three-quarter inch rock down?
They would, it doesn't specify that it has to be that approach, but it would have to be some kind of either vegetation, rock, mulch, soil sealant, something of that type that would prevent the fugitive dust from leaving.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing, without objection?
No, I was just going to say, I don't think I have an objection, I just, Mr. Reeves, I applaud you for the research that you always continuously do for our wonderful city, I truly do, and I really am amazed when you come up here and you, with your research, you say the things that you do of your understanding, and I look forward to hearing them, so that we have the opportunity to express them or explain them to you, as Brian just did. I think one of the things though is, I find it a little bit difficult to accept the word I don't think that we have anything compared to the city of Palmdale with what we're doing here with the city of Lancaster, it's apples and oranges. One is natural energy, and the other one is man-made energy, so it's two different things that we're addressing with the cities. However, I do applaud you and thank you for bringing in your concerns, so that we have the opportunity to explain them to you.
Any other comments?
No, I just can't see any better use, I mean, one of the things that we often forget, and I think probably Ron's could probably speak to this as well, is being planning commissioners, knowing the integrity of the importance of making the land use more compatible to protect the overflight area too, so anytime that we can either kick up the use of it in the, in the manner where we eliminate the potential use for high-density housing, whether it was owned R7,000 or, you know, now we're taking it to RR2.5. Anyway, I just think that anytime we make a land use change, I think it would be more compatible to having solar panels there as opposed to houses, so.
Deputy Mayor Harvey, you sit on the Planning Commission.
You know, and I was trying to resist using that other hat tonight, but I just want to echo the comments by Councilman Ma'am, there's a lot that goes into, you know, the research and the behind the scenes, and, you know, just as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, you know, we do applaud the fact that you come up and you do the research, and that is appreciated by your fellow citizens as well as, as well as this body, but we, as a sitting Planning Commission, we did our homework, worked with staff, and we didn't leave one stone unturned, so I think we've, we've done the best that we thought, and I would recommend that the council move forward on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? I need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to adopt the general plan amendment 1301 and zone change 1301. Can we take these two, the two recommendations in concurrence?
We have a resolution and an ordinance, can, we could take them in one motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I say my recommendation would be to adopt the resolution 13-15 and ordinance 992.
Second. We have a motion to adopt resolution 1351 and introduce ordinance number 992, let's Motion carries 4-0. Joint new business, you're up again.
Now we have before you the consideration of a resolution approving the loan amortization schedule for the loan from the city of Lancaster to the Lancaster Successor Agency. This is for the administrative expenses for the period January to June 2013. A promissory note was approved on January 8th, 2013, for a maximum amount of $398,219. The actual administrative expenses incurred and the resulting loan for the period January to June of 2013 are actually $130,698. Attachment A contains the amortization schedule, the interest is accrued at the local agency investment rate, which is also referred to as the LEAF rate, and according to our cash projections, the earliest loan repayment date would be July of 2027. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any questions?
No.
We need to take these separately? Yeah, let's do the City Council one first. So I need a motion and a second for-
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 1352.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion carries 4-0.
On behalf of the Successor Agency, I move that we adopt resolution number SA-1113.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members. We're here tonight to present our solar savings analysis that was prepared for the Lancaster School District. As you may be aware, the city of Lancaster began working with the school district back in 2010 to find a solution to the district's rising energy costs. We entered into agreements for all 21 of Lancaster School District sites and began construction throughout 2011. All of those sites began operating in 2012, and what we found in this analysis is that when you compare between the baseline data of 2009, shown on the left, and the 2012 data shown on the right, which is their first year of full solar operation, the district has realized over $374,000 in savings due to solar installation and other energy conservation measures. Should be noted that all of the panels and installations have performed and produced as expected, and because the school district did not pay any money out of pocket and had zero upfront costs, their savings was immediate, and there is no payback period to be considered. However, the total savings calculation includes a reduction in kilowatt-hours consumed due to the district staff's efforts to conserve and further reduce their costs. As can be seen, over $50,000 of the 374 is attributable to the district staff's energy
Thank you, Heather. I'm filling in right now to discuss these next three slides. This next slide has to do with demand charges, each one of those numbers you see there is a dollar amount, except for the percentages. Now, when you receive a bill for your home, you receive a bill that's based on kilowatt-hours consumed, and that's, that's pretty much all you get the bill for. So theoretically, your home residents, if you have solar panels, you could consume zero kilowatt-hours and receive a bill from Edison for zero dollars. For a business, as you probably know, they get billed separately, they get billed differently, they get billed non-energy charges and energy charges. Now with those non-energy charges, those can't be offset with solar power. So the point I want to make with these next three slides is that no matter how much solar power you produce, you're not going to be able to offset completely- power you produce, you're not going to be able to offset completely your bill from Southern California Edison. This comes in the form of their non-energy charges. The main portion of those charges is demand charges. The demand charge is based on your kilowatts. And your kilowatts are essentially the size of the pipe that's coming to your house, that's coming to your business, I'm sorry. And so if you use a lot of kilowatts, you get a larger bill. Based on the kilowatts, Edison determines your rate schedule. For Lancaster School District, the two main rate schedules that they have are TOU GS3 and GS2. That stands for Time of Use General Service 3 and General Service 2, just being a smaller amount of kilowatts. And as you see on this chart, in June 2011 up to April 2013, the demand charges went from $13.19 up to $15.22. That's a total increase of 15%. Now, if you switch to solar, you'd be placed on their option R, which is their option renewable, which is an incentive demand schedule, which in June 2011 was at $6.31, almost half of what it would be if you were not on a renewable source of energy, up to $10.96. And now that's a 74% increase. So you can see, you substantially save a lot of money by being on R. However, Edison has disproportionately increased the prices for option R as opposed to a regular service. And so even though we're on solar, we're still going to be paying these demand charges from Edison, and we're going to be seeing our bills increase according to SCE's rate schedule.
The chart before, that we just, well, we said that the regular demand from June 2011 to April 2013 went from $13.19 to $15.22, which is approximately a $2 difference, correct? However, for in solar, SCE raised the price also, but raised it almost five, over $5.
That's correct. The next slide goes into more detail about how these demand charges are applied to your bill. I've pulled one of the bills for you from the school, Lancaster School Site Endeavor. On this site, what happens is when you apply for option R, when you start getting an energy metering bill, eventually the, your bills will change rate schedules. It starts on general service, and then it'll go to an option R service. And what they do is Edison will actually retroactively adjust the previous bill. And so what I did is I pulled the bill for when it was on the regular service, and then I pulled the bill for when it was on option R, when they adjusted it. So what we're seeing here is we're seeing the same exact bill, but on a different schedule. We can see that the time period is from April 2nd, 2012 to May 1st, 2012, and that right underneath that, the non-energy charges, it says facilities real demand is 92 kilowatts, and it's multiplied by the $13.30 figure that we saw on the previous slide. And we see over to the right that's highlighted as $1,223.60. Moving immediately down to the bottom portion of this, we see that the total demand charges is only $585.12. So there is a real substantial and tangible savings by switching to renewable energy that's found in just SCE's rates. However, this, this bottom number isn't zero. We're still paying something to SCE, and that number is volatile and increases. And it increases about six to eight percent annually, and so we're going to see that increase in, in our payments to SCE. And Lancaster School District is also going to see that in their bills. They're never going to be, they're never going to only pay for solar, they're also going to pay SCE. And in this last slide that I'm discussing, this is showing the rate case that SCE just gave to the California Public Utilities Commission. And we can see the highlighted portion in yellow, we see that the average change between lighting, small and medium power and large power is 15.6% to 17.6%. Now this includes non-demand and demand, and, I'm sorry, non-energy and energy charges. So again, this is a huge increase that businesses are going to find, and fortunately for the city, for the city of Lancaster and the Lancaster School District, we are not going to be paying these 15.6% increases in whole because we have a flat agreement with the school district that they're only going to pay a certain amount, and they're not going to see the rapid increases. They will see a proportion of their bill increase in proportion to how much they buy from the grid, how much they buy from SCE, but in total, they won't see these volatile increases. And this is the main benefit that we get by switching to solar energy. And I'm glad to say that we can offer that benefit to other school districts. And so that concludes my portion, I'll give it back to Heather.
As was mentioned previously, although the initial sizing of the system in 2009 was 9.9 million kilowatt hours, the school district staff has done an exceptional job of taking energy conservation measures into their own hands, and they have decreased their usage by 292,000 kilowatt hours. That's been through a variety of efforts of their staff, and I wanted to make sure that they were commended for those efforts as well. Moving forward, energy efficiency measures can be an excellent complement to any solar installation. However, you want to make sure that they're targeted and a smart approach to your energy efficiency. What you see here is a review of consumption and production, and this on the right, the grid consumption, this is the percentage of power that is still being purchased from Edison. For a variety of reasons, the solar systems do not offset 100% of their energy needs at every site for a variety of reasons such as limited space, trees, trash trucks, deliveries. We had to either move, shift, downsize, but we did work to install as much as possible. But we will be working with district staff moving forward should any funds become available for energy efficiency measures. This is a schedule that'll show where we want to focus those efforts first and where they're going to get the most benefit. We did have several lessons learned throughout this process. As Trevin demonstrated, option R is vital to maximizing savings when it comes to transitioning to our solar. Endeavor in the previous example is an average school, average-sized school throughout the district with regards to consumption, and that savings in demand charges was approximately $600 a month. When you apply that over all solar accounts throughout the district, that option R equated to about $200,000 in savings. Unfortunately, option R cannot be applied for until you have what's called permission to operate from Edison. Once you have that permission to operate, you're allowed to turn the system on, and then you file the application to move on to the option R tariff. And unfortunately, that can take one to two billing cycles in order to take effect. What we've estimated is that because of this delay, there was approximately $33,000 in savings that was missed because we only utilized 10 of the 12 months being on option R. However, all, all of the accounts have been confirmed as being on option R, and in year two, they will realize a full, full savings and see that money come back to them. In addition, in the initial review, it was discovered that eight accounts did not initially transition as was requested, and we are looking into efforts for retroactive savings from Edison. Moving forward though, all of those accounts are on option R, so we're looking to work with district staff and Edison for any possible retroactive savings there. It's clear that Edison rates have increased, and they will continue to increase over the coming years. As you can see, the red line is the known Edison increases that are coming. However, that purple line that falls below it, that is the rate of the solar electricity cost. So we've created a buffer against the, against Edison's volatile and unpredictable rate changes. Moving forward, the district will realize quite a cost savings, maybe it's better to call it a cost avoidance. Should they implement any further energy efficiency, they will also see additional savings there. We've committed to working together to monitor those systems and identify any additional ways. There are some programs that we'll be looking into in addition to credit rollover, virtual net metering, renewable energy self-generation bill credit, also known as RESBCT, and again, those energy efficiency upgrades that we discussed. Thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Very nice presentation. Any questions?
No, no questions, just very, very nicely done, very informative. Thank you, guys, both of you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to CA1, consideration nomination appointment of Matthew Smith
to the Antelope Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board. I'll make that motion on behalf of Mayor Paris.
My second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do you want to recuse yourself or?
No.
Okay.
I'm not making any money from this.
Okay, let's vote. Motion passes, four zero. Congratulations, Matt. Okay, Lancaster Financing Authority, we have no action, Power Authority, no action. Executive Director, any announcements, Kelvin?
Not as the executive director, but for the city manager's comments, we've got a couple of videos that our communications manager would like to show.
Hello, I'm Joe Cabral, and I'm the communications manager for the city of Lancaster. And in a moment, it's going to be my pleasure to share with you a couple of recent television clips regarding the city of Lancaster. As you may recall, back in April, the New York Times officially named us the alternative energy capital of the world. Since then, we've had numerous film and news crews from literally around the world descend upon our city to tell our story. They've come from the Middle East, the Far East, and Europe. We have also had a few film crews come out to tell our story. For instance, Showtime Network will be featuring the city of Lancaster in an upcoming documentary exploring climate change, and Lancaster will be the segment of alternative energy. Our city is also being featured in the film Future of Energy, which will have its world premiere next Saturday in San Francisco. More recently, CBS Network News recently visited Lancaster to tell our alternative energy story, and I would like to share with you this national CBS story about the city of Lancaster.
This small city is California's biggest energy boomtown, Lancaster, in California's Mojave Desert. It averages about 300 days per year of the most intense sunlight in the country.
We intend to figure out a way to use it the most efficiently than anywhere in the world.
Three years ago, Mayor R. Rex Paris set a net zero power goal to harness the energy from the sun and become 100% power independent. Today, the city is halfway there and produces the most solar power per resident in the state.
It would be the deepest well if you were to imagine that was oil. And what's oil but power? And what is solar but power?
How hard has it been to get people on board with solar energy?
The city has just embraced it.
Solar panels are just about everywhere, on downtown rooftops, at schools, even the baseball stadium can power itself almost entirely by the sun.
They produce about 97% of the energy that's used in those facilities.
Jason Cottle is the deputy city manager and oversaw the installation of more than 6,000 panels in city buildings. The city leases them from a private company.
We paid 10 cents a kilowatt hour.
Okay.
We were getting charged from the utility companies about 18 cents a kilowatt hour. So we, we saved the difference.
It's made a big difference to the city's budget, saving more than a quarter million dollars each year in energy costs. The mayor plans to save even more.
We will be net zero within the next three years, and the goal is eventually this city becomes independent of the grid.
And next year, this city takes another step closer toward its net zero goal with a new law requiring solar panel installation in every single new home. Brandon Scott, CBS News, Lancaster, California.
Now in addition, as you know, our law enforcement aerial platform system, or LEAPs, has been in operation for approximately one year now. Well, recently, our local television news station, Time Warner Cable 3, produced a segment regarding one of the many successful LEAPs missions this year. So I'm happy to present to you and all the citizens of the Antelope Valley this segment about our LEAP system.
Calling 911 with your emergency. Calling 911 is the first step employees that this Central Valley Walmart in Lancaster took after a man and two teens loaded up a cart with food and clothing, and then police say tried to make a run for it.
One of the individuals claimed to have had a firearm. With that statement, the employee was in fear for their life, so had left them to leave. The suspects then continued pushing the shopping cart through the parking lot.
Deputy Miguel Ruiz with the LA County Sheriff's Office in Lancaster says that the next step was imperative in catching the crooks. Ruiz credits LEAPs, which is short for law enforcement aerial platform system.
Kind of just keeping an eye on suspicious vehicles in the area.
Run with this computer right in the 911 dispatch center.
So everything was within a matter of seconds that we were able to get a full view of the situation as it was playing out.
And with that, we can see the entire city from that angle.
LEAPs is a radar system camera attached to a single-engine Cessna that's been keeping an eye on crime in the Antelope Valley for almost a year now. And in this case too, the video speaks for itself as one of the suspects weaves in and out of someone's backyard.
Was instrumental in affecting the arrest as well as locating the suspects, and for the safety of all the ground deputies, giving coordination to where the suspects were at at every single second of the scenario.
Ruiz says since launching LEAPs last September, at least 40 arrests have been made with the help of that surveillance system, and that's not including the pending investigations.
There's a playground here, so anything that looks suspicious.
Ruiz says a pilot zooms in on at least 20 calls a day, mostly in Lancaster, but helping in Palmdale too. He says the pilots work about 10-hour days, and during lulls, they make other stops.
Like school campuses, the airplane will bounce around from school to school, shopping center to shopping center during the holiday season.
In Lancaster, I'm Lisa Lewebski for Time Warner.
That's very good. And lastly, as most everybody in the Antelope Valley knows, we here at the city hold a number of events on the Boulevard the last quarter of the year. Well, the first of these last quarter events is Celebrate America, and it takes place Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00. And I would like to share with you a brief promo, invite everybody on the television audience and in this room to come on out Saturday and join us for Celebrate America.
Journey back to bygone eras and experience a glimpse of the future as Celebrate America returns to the Boulevard for another resounding tribute to our great nation. Enjoy live music, tribute performances, vintage cars, a motorcycle show, classic rock and roll, and American memorabilia, as well as food, fun, and activities for all ages. Show your stars and stripes. Come Celebrate America on September 14th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the Boulevard.
Thank you, Joe. Wonderful job, and just great, and we'll all be there. Anything else?
No, sir.
City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible, so if it's necessary, the city council, city manager, and city staff will be able to have your contact information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting, and we do appreciate your cooperation. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I come up here tonight to speak about Antelope Valley Hospital. I attend all the board meetings. At the last board meeting, the chairman of the Antelope Valley Healthcare District, who is also chair of the hospital board, mentioned that the board was working with the city of Lancaster on some project to help stabilize the finances of the hospital. As you all know, the hospital is in financial trouble. Thereafter, it came out that it was recommended that people from foreign countries come to the AV hospital and have their children. the AV Hospital and have their children. And then controversy has arisen throughout the community. And it didn't help matters that last night on Channel 3, in an interview with Mitchell Chase, the mayor of Palmdale sniped at the individual that made that recommendation. And I thought that was uncalled for, and if I run into him tomorrow at the 9/11 ceremony, I'll tell him to his face. But in the meantime, it would behoove the leaders of both Palmdale and Lancaster to make some kind of agreement to have a meeting with the board members of the AV Healthcare District and see if we can come up with some solutions to save the hospital. We already lost one hospital, a community hospital, when it moved to Palmdale. We don't need to lose the only nonprofit hospital around here that's utilized not only by the Antelope Valley, but it's also utilized by the people of eastern Kern County. They come down and use this hospital. We don't want to lose the hospital. I've offered to go out and promote the hospital to groups at no charge, to do whatever I can to mediate the bitterness that's going on between the board and the union, since I have good relations with both. I'll do whatever I can to save the hospital as an individual citizen, and I don't think that there should be this sniping going on. When you're in a desperate situation, a lot of ideas come up, maybe they're not feasible, maybe they're not good, but let's discuss them and see if we can come up with a resolution and how to deal with this crisis. So even though we might be the solar capital of the world, we don't want to be a city without our own hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Dan?
What I have to talk about tonight, hello, everybody, is about the resolution that I wasn't here two weeks ago, I was in training down below in Downey, so I miss that meeting. But I'm real unhappy with it. I don't think that we have any business doing anything with that. And I'd like to go back a little bit when I talked to you all before. Approximately three and a half years ago, I came to this council to tell you of an event where I was involved in a motor vehicle accident where an undocumented illegal alien, whatever you want to call it, you know, hit me and my daughter, okay? At that time, I was assured by all of you that, you know, well, we're going to have EVIRIFY here, and EVIRIFY is going to make it uncomfortable for people to come here. They're not going to want to be part of this, okay? Well, then, down the road here, now EVIRIFY has been voted out because it's an unpopular thing. Well, you know, sometimes we have to do things that are unpopular, okay? Unpopular sometimes doesn't get you reelected. But when I look at it, you know, in the article, the article that I read in the paper said that two of you changed your mind because of one of you had a compelling hardship story. You know, my grandparents came here, came through Ellis Island from Hungary and Czechoslovakia. When they came to this country, they had up $2,000 in their pocket, they had to have a sponsor, and they had to have a place to live, okay? And if they got off that boat and they as much as had, you know, pink eye or a cough, they were put back on the boat and sent back to where they came from, okay? I'm all for anybody coming to this country legally, but I'm not, and I do not want the people that I elect, all of you, to come and put some type of a resolution through that says we should push this through. I don't care what we have invested in any of these people. The people came here of their own free will, just as my grandparents did. They left their families behind when they came here, that was their choice. Anybody that comes here, that's their own choice. So, you know, we all have sad stories, you know, and I've sat here probably over the last five and a half, six years now, and a lot of you weren't on the city council when I first started coming here, okay? So I've seen every one of you stand in front of these audiences, and I've watched this lady ask and minister an oath of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the state of California, okay? And I don't expect anything but that from all of you, that you follow those laws that are put forth, okay? There are laws on the book, and those laws need to be followed, okay? That's about all I have to say. I know it's not a popular subject.
No, Dan, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you for your comments, first of all. Did you have an opportunity to read the resolution?
No, I did not. I was out of town for, actually, for six weeks.
Okay, I had the exact same feeling that you did or presented just now, but the number one thing in that resolution says, "Seal the borders." Okay, so the number one says, "Seal the borders, fix the problem." So that's what we said, "Seal the borders and fix the problem." So it wasn't to excuse anybody coming here illegally, it wasn't here to say we support anything other than seal the borders, fix the problem, okay? So that's why I voted for it. I agree with you, it doesn't belong in the city council, but it was brought forth to us, so I'm giving you my touch on it. And EVIRIFY, to answer your question, EVIRIFY, it came to us or was told to us by the state of California that we could no longer require it. So we didn't back down from that position, it was told to us from the state of California that we can no longer require it. We still implement it if they would like to have it, but the main thing why I voted for it was due to the fact that it said, "Seal the borders." Does that help you at all?
Not particularly, no, but I thank you for your comments.
Okay. Thank you. Joyce Roberts. Hi.
To the fellow council members, I'm representing the neighbors that live on Gadsden Avenue between J-10 and J-11. We're having a problem with the parents that are taking their kids to Sierra preschool. They're rude, they're unethical, they're unprofessional, they even threaten us. But the main problem that we are seeing is that there's child endangerment, there's accidents, and we've come so close to having possible deaths, and when we called for the police officials and all, they don't show up. And they ask us, well, if somebody, if there's blood or if somebody has been hurt, they don't have time to come. With the excessive traffic and the situations, we have had carjackings, cars broken into, loud noise, trash put into our yards, purse snatchings, parents have even been hit. Last week, emergency personnel had difficulty in reaching a child that suffers from chronic asthma and who was having a serious attack. Today, another neighbor had difficulty leaving with her husband to take him to the hospital. Also today, my car was parked in my driveway, and I was rear-ended. Now, who pays for that, okay? When I called for the sheriff and the assistance of the school, nobody showed up. Now I have a rear-ended car. This is not fair to me, especially being a business owner there. I am a daycare provider, so the residents are seeking help from our city council. We have called on the sheriff department, but their cry is budget cuts, and they have not come out to view even today's incidents. We, the residents, have even called on the assistance from Sierra Elementary, the Lancaster School Board, the Transportation Authority, the director of the Head Start program, but still to no avail. Each of these organizations shift the responsibility and the blame of safety to other agencies. We resolve that by closing the gates on the Gadsden side by the Head Start program with aid in keeping our neighborhood and residents, residences, safe once again. I am for educating our youth, but we must educate the parents of the Sierra Head Start program regarding the parking and observing the rules and parking safety. If we don't do it and get it done quickly, somebody's going to get killed because kids are always running across the street. We need your help.
Joyce, could you be more specific and tell me what they're doing, what's taking place?
Sure. In between 7:20 and 7:45, this is the first period, you get parents that don't care. They will come, they will block your driveway, they will pull into your driveway, like today when the lady crashed my car in the back, and they'll get out and tell you that we have to get our kids to school, okay? This is not fair to us. We need to be able to move back and forth. I provide a service for parents. I go and pick up kids, and I drop kids off, I take them to school, I take them to wherever they need to go within the ramifications of what we've set up for the daycare center, but a lot of times I cannot get out of my own driveway. We put cones and trash cans out, and we feel like we are our own vigilantes. We need your help. Kids that get sick, adults that get sick, the emergency personnel need to be able to get there to get that person to the hospital, okay? But we have insipid people that don't care, and if a person dies because of their stupidity, I mean, that's just gross, okay? So we need your help if we can't get help from...
I'm going to direct you to see that individual in the back. He's raising his hand.
Yes, sir.
If you'll go back and talk to him, he'll fix that problem for you.
Thank you, very kindly.
Okay?
Bye.
Thank you. Sheldon?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris, Deputy Mayor. I'm a new resident in Lancaster with my daughter. We've been robbed already three times, residential burglaries, our car's been broken into. I have a resident on my block that has four houses. Nobody in the state of California could answer my question. I'm working with Public Safety, I'm working with Sergeant DeChamps. She's converting her houses into halfway homes, closing off the garages, we're getting parolees in the neighborhood, she's renting out the room, she's creating, she's making more rooms out of her houses, collecting under the pilot program. She runs a daycare out of her home. There should be so many feet between a halfway house and having a daycare. She's doing everything under the sun. I've called Department of Children Services, nobody could answer the restrictions or requirements. She has no business license, and she has no permits to close off the garages. And I'm working with Didi Krishna, I'm working with everybody, and nobody could answer my question. And meanwhile, there's crime in the neighborhood, and I call the police two, three times a day, and I think they're getting a little upset with me, and it's not my fault.
See this lady right there, she's going to raise her hand?
Yes.
She's going to help you.
She is?
She's going to help you.
Thank you, because I even called Assemblyman Fox, and they couldn't help.
After we go, she's in charge of our code enforcement, she'll take a look at all your complaints and...
At the end of the meeting?
Yes, she'll come see you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to recess to close session for the purpose of conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2, three potential cases in conference with legal counsel, existing litigation in Government Code 54956.9A.
For each of the items listed on the agenda.
Okay, we're going to now reconvene meeting. We have very good news. I wish I could tell you all of it, but I'm going to let the city attorney do it.
In closed session, the city council discussed with city attorney one item of anticipated litigation and authorized a settlement with Cal Water with regard to their proposed rate increases whereby Cal Water will implement its rate structure as follows over the next period of time.
Can you preface us by saying that they wanted a 58.9%?
Correct. Originally, Cal Water sought a 58.9% rate increase in its current rate application, and that was vehemently opposed by this council. And staff and myself were directed to engage in negotiations with Cal Water to see where we could go with those numbers. As a result of this council's strong stance and those negotiations, the following settlement was authorized by the council. Commencing in January of 2014, the water rates in the Cal Water area will have a net decrease of 3.5% until March of 2014, at which point they will increase again over current rates by 0.4%. Thereafter, in 2015, they will increase by 4.5%. In 2016, 5.21% for a total rate increase over a three-year period of 9.54%, assuming a 15% reduction in water usage or 9.86% in the event of a 30% reduction. In all expected scenarios, the rate increase over the next three years will not exceed 10%.
Very nice job.
Down from the 58.9% request.
Very nice job, very nice.
I will share your concurrence with that approach with Cal Water.
Okay, thank you. Any comments by council? Deputy Mayor?
I just thought it was a very productive meeting, and it was good to hear those results regarding the Cal Water issue. Thank you.
We're going to stand adjourned for the Housing Authority until Tuesday, September 24, 2013, at 5:00. And we're going to adjourn the city council meeting until Tuesday, September 24, 2013, at 5:00. Thank you.